I hereby call to order this meeting of the King George County Board of Supervisors. Mr. Kuzenberry, do we have any amendments to the agenda, sir?
Yes, ma'am. We have one amendment under presentation and reports. Captain Copeland will be attending your April 20th meeting to provide a presentation instead of tonight.
Thank you, sir. Can I get a motion?
Move to modify the agenda as presented by Mr. Kuzenberry.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Public comment. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person in order to afford everyone an opportunity to speak. If comments relate to a specific public hearing item, we ask that you offer those comments at the time of the hearing, and I do not believe we have, no, we do not have any public hearings tonight. All right, and ladies and gentlemen, when you come forward, please state your name and address. Anyone wishing to give a public comment can come forward. Mr. Dines, can you see if the microphone is on, sir, at the podium? Okay, and could you, would you mind bringing forward, yep, thank you. Mr. Dines will bring those forward, ma'am. Thank you very much. Okay, go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Tiny Tang, and I'm originally from China. I'm a U.S. citizen living in Fairfax County. For cultural reasons, Chinese people believe that a person's body should remain intact after death. As a result, people in China do not want to donate their organs. Yet, suddenly, in the early 2000s, Chinese hospitals began advertising short wait times for vital organs. Where did all these human organs come from? Extensive and credible reports have revealed that the Chinese Communist Party, CCP, has been killing prisoners of conscience, most of them Falun Gong practitioners, to, in order to sell the organs. A prominent international human rights organization recently stated, forced organ harvesting has been committed for years throughout China on a significant scale, and Falun Gong practitioners have been one and probably the main source of organ supply. China has become a major international center for organ transplants, and many American patients travel there for this purpose. In fact, a Northern Virginia resident recently received an offer from China of a kidney transplant for $50,000. This issue should concern us here in King George County because members of our community who needed an organ might consider traveling to China for a transplant. Here in the U.S., the wait time for the matching kidney or liver can take several years. But in China, they can supply a match in a matter of weeks or less. Can you imagine finding out after the fact that the, your new organ was taken from a person who had been impressed for his religious beliefs and then executed so the CCP could sell you his organ? Please consider passing a resolution alerting our residents and our medical professionals about this issue so then may make an informed decision before traveling to China for an organ transplant. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Jisung Bay. I am originally from South Korea, and I am now an American citizen living in Fairfax County. I would like to offer additional comments on forced organ harvesting in China. Falun Gong is a spiritual practice involving gentle exercises, meditation, and the virtues of truthfulness, compassion, and tolerance. Started in China in 1992, Falun Gong has benefited the holistic health of over 100 million people around the world. Because of Falun Gong's immense popularity and its emphasis on spirituality, the Chinese Communist Party, CCP, considered it a threat. As a result, the head of the CCP launched the persecution of Falun Gong in July 1999. Countless practitioners have been tortured, killed, or disappeared to this day. Shortly after the persecution began, the number of organs available for transplant suddenly increased in China. Standing beside me is Chun Yan Wang, a Virginia resident and a survivor of the CCP's persecution. The police in China killed her husband for protecting her. She spent seven years in prison for telling people about Falun Gong. She was also blood tested to determine the compatibility of her organs for a potential transplant. If someone goes to China for a transplant, this could very possibly result in the death of innocent Falun Gong practitioner. The issue of forced organ harvesting in China has been underreported in the U.S. media. In response, a total of nine counties in Virginia, including Fairfax, Prince William, and the Pennsylvania, recently passed resolutions to educate their residents about the practice, and today I ask you to do the same. Please introduce and pass a resolution to raise awareness of this issue. We are submitting petitions from 100 local residents in support of this request. Your action will help prevent the citizens of Stafford County from becoming the unwilling accomplices to the murder of innocent people. It will also help educate our citizens that the Chinese people and the Chinese Communist Party are not one and the same. Thank you.
Thank you. You can bring it forward, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you for coming out. Next for public comment.
Hello, everyone. Can you hear me? Hi, evening. Thank you so much. My name is Melanie Santana Ochs. I'm a proud citizen here in King George, living at 2295 River Drive, and I have to say I am honored to be part of the board of the Ralph Bunch Arts and Humanities Center here in King George. So on behalf of the board, I just want to let you know that we intend to submit a revised letter of intent to the interim county administrator for your consideration and review. And as always with the Ralph Bunch Arts and Humanities Center, we welcome all comments and questions and concerns to us here at the Ralph Bunch Arts and Humanities Center. So just wanted to let you know, and thank you for your time again. Appreciate it.
Thank you, ma'am. Would anyone else here in the audience like to come forward for public comment? We do the room first, and then I open it to online, so we won't, I won't pitch it back to the room. So let's take care of the room first. You all have preference because you are physically here in the building. Thank you, sir.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name's Perry Bowen. I live at 17518 Nazata Lane, King George, Virginia. I'm a full-time farmer, and I would like to read this letter. "April 6, 2021, King George County Board of Supervisors, King George, Virginia. Good evening Chairman Cupka, Vice Chairman Stonehill, Ms. Bender, Mr. Granger, and Mr. Bush. My name is Perry Bowen. I reside at 17518 Nazata Lane in King George, Virginia. I'm a full-time farmer and have been my whole life. I moved to King George in 2000 when we bought Oak and Brow. We raise corn, soybeans, and wheat. Our main crop is alfalfa hay that we produce by proprietary means and bag in 20-pound white plastic bags. Our alfalfa is sold under the name Atlantic Hay. Our main company is, customer is a tractor supply company of Brentwood, Tennessee. We sell TSC 35 to 40 semi-loads of alfalfa each year. We produce alfalfa six months per year and sell it all year. Enough dark, dry storage for our alfalfa is a limiting factor in the growth of our farm. We also grow sweet corn and vegetables in the summertime. We look forward to opening our farmer's market this summer on tax map parcel 3920D." I'll stop here to say you're going to get sick of the word "tax map parcel," but it's important to the county. "We own about 600 acres of cropland. We work an additional 250 acres that we do not own. We raise crops on at least 15 different tax map parcels. We have a barnyard on parcel 3920 and on another, and another on parcel 3920D. We have additional storage building on parcel 3920. I am here tonight to make you aware that farmers in King George County are not allowed to process, store, or sell their crops on tax map parcels other than the parcel on which they were grown. I was made aware of this because this policy was used as the basis for denying agricultural building exemptions for my farm buildings on parcel 3920D. I have been served by the county several times with the same information. The last service was at noon today. I have argued with the county since last August that their position is nonsense. It is not based on code, practice, or precedent. This is a very big deal. Since colonial times, farmers in the Commonwealth have moved their harvested crops from one tax map parcel to another. Farmers have also built barns, grain bins, and other agricultural buildings on tax map parcels with no limit, with no or limited cropland since before there were tax map parcels. Today, it is not uncommon to see hay grown on one parcel stored on another. Corn and soybeans are trucked from fields on one tax map parcel and stored in bins on others."
Excuse me, Mr. Bowen. I regret to inform you, you're at 3 minutes and 15 seconds. I do note that you have supplied a printed copy. I would assume if this is what you were reading, each supervisor has been provided a copy?
Yes.
Very good.
Mr. Frank is here to speak, and he was going to volunteer my time.
So, sir, unfortunately, per the bylaws, page 18, number 3, time limits, no person may cede or grant their time to another during public comment. And those were enacted on January 4, 2021, and I do have to enforce them, sir.
Fair enough. I didn't, I said I wasn't here for that meeting.
Yes, sir.
Okay. You get the point.
Thank you, sir, and we'll take it under advisement. Every supervisor has your written correspondence to us. Thank you, sir, for coming out. I appreciate it. Would anyone else like to give a public comment this evening? All right. Mr. Dines, do we have anyone online that wishes to provide public comment? Mr. Lynch, can you hear me, sir?
Yes, ma'am.
Very good, sir. You have three minutes.
Yes, ma'am, I can, yes.
All right then, sir. You may begin.
Okay, Ms. Cupka, I, I appreciate it. I'm Jim Lynch, 8263 Oakwood Drive, King, King, George. A week and two ago, I had the honor of introducing Anne O'Neill, who's the acting, new acting superintendent of the Potomac Heritage Trail, to a, a, a small, a small, 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 small group at, 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 at Caladon. Ms. Cupka was there, appreciated. Mr. Stonehill was also there. Among the things I discussed were, were a number of the accomplishments that we've had on, on the railroad trail, and also a number, a number, a number of, a number, a number of challenges that we are working on. One of our challenges, which has been a long, long-held goal, is to establish the community, the community of Dogren as a, as, as, as a trail, a trail, trail town. Among the things that we're looking at to encourage that recognition is we are going to begin, begin starting our 50-kilometer race at, at Dogren in 2022. We, we have began, we have begun talking with Lisa Caswell, who is the, who is the manager of the Holiday Inn Express, as, as well as a member of the Tourism Advisory Committee about how to make that work, which hotel would be the host hotel. To, to, to keep the ball rolling here, Chris Chalkley, who will be talking with you guys later this evening, has, has begun the, the sheets-to-sheets run. This has turned out to be an extremely popular activity, and, and he will, he will be talking with you about that later on. But I did want, want to use this opportunity to, to, to talk about one of our challenges and one of our goals, to establish the Dogren community as a trail town on the Potomac Heritage Trail. So, Madam Chairman, as always, I appreciate the opportunity to come in. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lynch. Mr. Dines, do we have anyone else online wishing to provide public comment? Very good then. I will now close public comment and move on to reports of members of the board. Mr. Granger.
Yes, ma'am. First, I'd like to say thank you to everyone for coming out and providing your, your comment. Ladies, I apologize. I need to do a better job of writing down the names, but thank you so much for coming out and sharing the packet of information about the occurrences with organ harvesting. Obviously, a terrible thing. I don't think anyone in this room would think that's, that's okay. So, but I appreciate bringing it for us and educating us to give us that information. And taking our advisement, the resolution, we'll, we'll consider it and see what happens. But, but thank you for coming out and speaking. I really do appreciate it. Ms., Ms. Ochs, was it? Thank you for coming out. I appreciate your heads up on a submittal of a possible letter of intent that you guys will be proposing. So thank you for that heads up. Well, we'll be looking for it, and obviously, we'll be considering anything that comes forth. Mr. Bowen, got the letter. I'll read the whole thing. I appreciate you didn't get the opportunity to read the whole thing, but, but I will read it. I don't know the code off the top of my head, so I'll have to speak with community development to better understand, educate myself on the particulars, make sure I understand everything. So I don't want to comment upon it at the moment, but I do appreciate you coming out and, and letting us know about the challenges you're having and seeing what we can do to possibly address it. And Mr. Lynch, thank you for calling in. I always appreciate hearing from you. I'm a big proponent of the, the trail, so thanks for coming in or calling in, Mr. Lynch, and sharing everything going on. Other than that, I don't really have much to report. Obviously, we've been having our budget work sessions. Like I say, thank you to staff and our citizen budget advisory committee who've all been coming to help us to formulate a budget. I think we're getting really close, and so I really appreciate everyone coming together and staff working real hard to get us something to present here soon and, and get the budget done. So that's all I have, but thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Granger. Mr. Stonehill.
Thanks for, everybody for coming out. Ms. Tang, and thank you for you and your group and for that information. You know, we'll look into it and do a lot of research and, and see, but those, those points that you brought up are, are terrible, obviously. So we will look at it and consider, you know, copying a resolution as well. And I'm sure we'll get back to you, but thank you for coming out. Ms. Ochs, thanks. Thank you for coming out and showing your, and explaining the letter of support and everything, and we will see where this goes from here, but thank you. Mr. Bowen, thank you. I was unaware of all this, so we'll do some research and find out, you know, what, what's going on with that, and we'll see what we can, see what we can work out. We'll, I'm sure we'll all dig into the letter and, and, and get with zoning and find out what that's all about. And Mr. Lynch, thanks for coming out. Yes, that was a great presentation you did at Caladon and to meet Ms. O'Neill as well, and to learn more about the Potomac Heritage Trail. And thanks for lunch. And we're, I think everybody in King George a big supporter of, of the trail. It's a very unique, beautiful place that, it's a great place to go get some exercise, so thank you for calling in. Report-wise, March 17, we all attended a budget meeting here for the county, the county budget, and like Mr. Granger said, we're getting closer and closer. Then on the 20th, Mrs. Cupka and I participated in a free tree giveaway that was done by Virginia Department of Forestry and Friends of the Rappahannock River. It was a great turnout. We gave out 400 trees that were reserved from King George residents to be put in the ground here in King George, and we'll be doing another one of those come fall, and I'm sure we'll let everybody know about that. Then on the 23rd, like Mr. Lynch said, we attended a, a meeting with, at Caladon about rails and trails and staff from the National Park Service, particularly Ms. O'Neill. 24th, I attended a virtual meeting with the Rappahannock River Basin Commission, General Health on the River and things that are going on in Richmond, having to do with the Rappahannock River. And we did hear that Richmond, I think, finalized the scenic heritage river for, for the Rappahannock, which is great news for that. I guess that'll come out in July or something. And on the 27th, I participated in the park cleanup day that we had here in King George County for all around the park. Many thanks to Parks and Rec and folks at Little League and everybody else that came out to volunteer. 31st, we had our la, our, our most recent budget meeting where we had, we heard from Dr. Benson and the school about their school budget, and I just wanted to say thank you to Dr. Benson and his staff for such a great presentation, very thorough as usual. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Stonehill, Ms. Bender.
Thank you very much. Ladies, Tiny, I remember, I met you last week when you came. I appreciate that you came back to speak. You had, I met you, and you had asked if, when to come and public comment. We have a lot to read here and consider. I appreciate all three of you traveled down, something you're very passionate about. Thank you very much for, for speaking and coming in front of us. And go down the list. Ms. Ochs, thank you for coming out and telling us about what you'll be submitting to us and something that we consider and look at in the future. Mr. Bowen, I will definitely, especially since you're in my district, looking at this and finding out some more information. You have a lot of information in here to digest, and so I'll be reaching out to find out what's going on. But I appreciate you coming. Mr. Frank also too, coming in in support of your friend. Mr. Lynch, as always, thank you for all you do for the trail and giving us an update on what's happening. I also community, participated in the community cleanup day with my daughter, who, as I've said before, hates litter and doesn't understand why people litter in our lovely parks. I met some nice families out there. They had brought their little children, and they were waiting up in the swampy area picking out trash. And I appreciate all the citizens that came out and helped clean up Sidell Brooks Park where I was at. And then lastly, for our budget work sessions, please, everyone in the community, watch them. They're on King George County content. A lot of people ask me questions recently about it, and I say, "Have you watched our meetings?" And they're like, "No." So I encourage the citizens, if you want to know what's going on in the county and you can't get to a meeting, please watch us online if you're hearing tonight, and understanding that we have a lot of hard decisions to make. Tax dollars are involved. Your kids are involved, so please pay attention and give us a call or come and speak in public comment virtually or in person in the boardroom. And that's all the comments I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Bender, Mr. Bush.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So to everybody who came out and speak tonight, thank you very much for, for coming out, and Mr. Lynch online, but I'm going to spend some time specifically speaking about Mr. Bowen's letter. Sir, thank you very much for bringing this to our attention and for the detail that you put in this letter. This is something I would really like to get looked at. You know, a lot of times this board hears about land being subdivided. People are, you know, there's no profit in farming for a lot of people, so they take their farmland. The next generation might not want to be a farmer, so the land gets sold off. It gets subdivided. Farming is a dying industry, unfortunately. This is an occasion where we have a farmer who wants to be able to continue farming, continue, continue that. So I would like to see what we can do. Sometimes regulation is necessary, but sometimes it is not, and it can really get in the way. And our primary job as a local body is to look after our local citizens, and, and that starts, starts here. So this is something I would really like to get looked at as soon as possible. So thank you very much, sir, for bringing this to our attention. To follow up on what Ms. Bender said about the budget work sessions, they've been not well-attended, if attended at all. I know some people have been watching online. This is your money. We don't have a vault in the back room and decide how much money we're going to take out to pay for things. This comes from your tax dollars. So to the public in King George County, if you wait till we're done and we hold a public hearing on the budget, you're basically too late. public hearing on the budget, you're basically too late. All the debate has happened, everything's been looked at, we've, this body has done a very thorough job this year at looking at the budget, and there's a lot of needs, a lot of needs, um, but only so much money. And if we have to go over a certain level, well, that's going to take a tax increase. So the citizens need to be informed about where your money is going, so I would highly encourage people to uh either attend or watch online, watch it on the YouTube channel, we have a budget uh work session tomorrow evening. So, um, I do have one point of business, Madam Chair, if I may, I would like to make an appointment to the Smoot Library Board of Trustees. I would like to nominate Ms. Margaret Clark for appointment as a trustee.
Second. So, standby one, is that one of the new ones, or is that a recently expired?
I had.
That's a an agenda item under Presentations and Reports for E.
Oh, I have, I have a vacancy that's been vacated.
You have an existing vacancy?
I have an existing vacancy. It's uh Shelley Rens had resigned her position.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure it shouldn't go under that section. Yep, go right ahead, Mr. Bush.
Yeah, so this is, this is to uh finish out the term for Ms. Shelley Rens.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Chair, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Bush. Um, so I want to start by thanking uh Ms. Tang and Ms. Bay for coming out uh and sharing the information with us, thank you very much for doing so. Um, Ms. Oaks, thank you for your comments this evening. Uh, Mr. Bowen, thank you very much for your comments. Sergeant Major, thank you for coming out to support your friend and neighbor this evening. And Mr. Lynch online, thank you for your comments regarding the trail. Uh, I I have a report that I will publish later online, I just have one item that I do want to share and am seeking board action on. On Monday, March 29th, 2021, myself and Mr. Cusenberry met with representatives of King George Branch NAACP to hear their concerns regarding diversity issues in our community. I'm formally requesting authorization from the Board of Supervisors to form a working group and appoint three members of our community, Supervisor Kathy Bender, Mr. Robert Ashton, Vice President, King George Branch NAACP, and Mr. Nick Minor, to determine the following. Number one, the need for a diversity advisory committee. Number two, the charter, scope, and term of service for the same. And number three, an application process and review and recommendation to the Board of Supervisors for appointment of committee members. So, as Chairman, I can allow a motion, and I am going to go ahead and move to do same. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Go ahead, Mr. Granger.
Yes, ma'am, I'd just like to understand, what's um, what would be the um, the goals of of this diversity? So if there was a committee that was decided to be stood up, what would be the the roles of that? What's the, what's the end goal of that organization or that committee trying to do, accomplish?
That's a good question. So the working group would determine that, and the intention in appointments is to maintain diversity of race, ethnicity, gender, sexual orientation slash identity, religion, national origin, physical or mental ability, et cetera, of not more than 10 members. Uh, you must be a citizen resident of the county of King George, and the committee will be advisory in nature and have no spending or policy authority as those responsibilities are reserved by the Board of Supervisors.
So that's the working group, so the working group would be creating or just investigating is what you're saying?
The working group would determine the need, create the charter or scope of the purpose of the advisory committee, the term of service, and come up with the application process and do the review of the applications to make a recommendation to this body for appointment to the committee. Yes, sir.
I'm just gonna say, I'm not a big fan of having lots of committees, you know, we have, we certainly have a fair number, and you know, there's a, there's a good reason for some of them. Um, Community Development works in specifically dealing with ordinances and and rezonings. Um, we have our EDA, which is in a committee, but it's an authority to work with Mr. Minor and Economic Development. Um, I did, would there be a plan to have this committee work with some county division? Would there be a need to stand up a new division in the county, or is it just a committee that is just kinda there? I'm, I'm, I'm just a little confused. I mean, like, tourism deals with tourism dollars, which we collect, which is all state mandated, I mean, a lot of committees have to deal with, dealing with issues about state mandates and things like that. Um, I'm just trying to understand.
Sure. Well, as I said, this committee would not have spending authority, you mentioned the EDA, they in fact do have spending authority, so they are a little bit different. Um, they also are individually appointed by this body and also, I believe, taken oath with the clerk of the court, and hence their ability um to authorize the spending, but um, I'm not looking for something like that here, I'm merely looking for an advisory committee to make recommendations, the ultimate authority would still rest with the governing body. Um, wasn't looking up right now to stand up a whole staff department, just looking for some extra help and some input from the citizens of our community.
I guess if it's just a working group to do an investigation and report back, I mean, that's, that's something we can do, um, but I'm just not a big fan, I mean, even when we come back, you know, about standing up new committees, um, just for the sake of standing up new committees, so.
Okay, thank you, sir. Uh, Mr. Stonehill?
It seems like a lot of the other counties also have done this as well. Um, you know, not that I say that we have to go and, you know, toe the line at everybody else, but this, you know, if we had a a working group just to bring stuff to our attention, ideas, different thoughts, um, and uh, and then bring to us and say, hey, you know, what if? I'm not a huge fan of of committee after committee after committee, but we don't have anything like this. And in the change of that, you know, what, how the, how the country and the world is going, I mean, I think it's a pretty good idea. I mean, you get a group of people that get together with all different, you know, aspects coming from many different cultures and everything to come to us and say, hey, what do you think about this idea? You know, if it's something just like that, I mean, I'm, I'm in support of it, obviously it's going to fall back on us, you know, what we, what we come up with, but this is just, this is getting a group of people together, putting their heads together and coming up with different ideas to make everything more inclusive for everybody here in the county.
Thank you, Ms. Bender.
I thought long and hard about this, but um, I was, the working group is a working group, and if we make sure we include seniors and those that are disabled and everyone that has an interest, especially, I've seen recently seniors in the way sometimes they're treated by folks not understanding their needs or people that have disabilities, but it's a working group. So it could come before the board and and it just doesn't happen. But a lot of other localities locally um around us, and Prince William Leesburg and Stafford especially have written recent charters concerning this. And I don't know, if we make it our own, it can be exactly what we set it up as, but I got asked, I accepted, and we'll see where it goes.
Thank you, Ms. Bender. Mr. Bush?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, I think we might be looking at a solution to a problem that might just get boggled down with too many people, like, we were looking at, at the race aspect, we were looking at gender, sexual orientation, but like Ms. Bender brought up, we have age, we have the disabled, we have the veteran community, and all those different boxes of of different backgrounds, different experiences, there are so many that it truly couldn't be captured in a committee, in my opinion, that would be of reasonable size, especially if it is just to um be advisory in nature. And the question is advisory to whom and advisory to what? I don't understand what the, what the ultimate objective would be of the committee, and I understand other counties have done this, but I believe before God do something, it should be done with a purpose, not just to do something. Um, I understand the reasoning behind it, I just don't think there's, I don't think we're at that point right now, especially with all the different organizations we have in the county right now that are free to come to the board. I know our previous county administrator and interim county administrator have met with various organizations and groups that that have questions or concerns, um, and public comment is always able, supervisors always afford their time to meet with people, so at this point, um, and and it, the fact that this resulted from a meeting with an organization just shows that these organizations can have those meetings with supervisors and have that influence to get it before the the full board. So at this point, I, I wouldn't be in support of setting up a working group.
Thank you, Mr. Bush. We have a motion properly seconded, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Chair votes aye, motion carries, 3-2. All right then, let's move on to consent agenda.
Move to adopt the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I didn't, Mr. Bush, did you? I might have missed it.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, sorry. All right then, chair votes aye, motion carries, thank you. Uh, county officials reports, I do not see any constitutional officers in attendance this evening, so let's move on to the report of the county attorney, Mr. Britton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The first item, I actually don't have it in front of me, but the, for the order, but the first item that I put on there was just an application for an ABC permit. Uh, those alcohol permits come before three people, to my knowledge, the Commonwealth Attorney, the sheriff, and the county attorney, and so I just forward them to you, we have 30 days to make any objection to the issuance of the permit, uh, for whatever reason you may wish. I've also sent it to Community Development, they have no comments uh that they wish to be handled through the county, and um, Mr. Cusenberry is here, but he didn't have any comments either, and uh, nor do I. I think it's for beer in line at the driving range at Cameron Hills. Chris, sheriff's aware of it, uh, and I also assume the Commonwealth Attorney's aware of it, I've had no communication with her about it, but I have with the sheriff, um, and so they can make independent comments. I only bring it to your attention in case y'all wanted to direct Travis or myself or Heather to make some comment. Usually they, from the county side, they follow along the lines of traffic or um concerns about late, you know, night or permits that are issued, but we've cross-referenced all those, there's no issue there that we know of, there'd be no regulation or law or concern that we have. The.
Thank you, go ahead, Mr. Britton.
The next matter is just another informational matter, Rappahannock Regional Jail Bond, um, Ms. Bender can illuminate anything that I don't, um, because I believe you sit on that, that board, uh, oh, you did, oh, Ms. Cupka can illuminate, excuse me, um, I sit on that board, and um, so the Rappahannock Regional Jail is one of the regional commissions that we sit on, you can have a jail in a locality in which case the sheriff runs the jail, that's one of their constitutional duties, if you join a region, then uh, then you cede that authority to be, to have it run elsewhere, and our regional jails in Stafford, and they can do things just like a service authority or an EDA, one of them is issue bonds, and they have a bond, there's a bond refinancing, which is a good deal, you just heard it on the service authority side, the county has entered into it, rates are, are going down. In any event, um, it was opinion of Rappahannock Regional Jail Council, uh, as well as Bond Council, um, that the county did not need to um have a hearing on this or have a vote on this, uh, as a result of the obligation going, going down. That's really their liability, so I agree with it, I mean, if they think they need a vote, they ask for the vote from the county, uh, but the moral obligation, uh, and the backing of these bonds from the localities that are a member of a regional commission such as a jail or industrial authority or what have you, um, uh, is really important to the regional authority, not to the locality, so we don't need to do anything. Uh, this bond has, has been refinanced and has closed, I reviewed the documents, um, Travis reviewed the documents, uh, they were back from 2015 backwards, so that worked out pretty well. They were difficult to find, I had to go into one of those huge giant books that Travis showed me where they were and and open them to find one of the motions, which was actually printed in there, so we did locate them, so now we'll have a file of the previous refinancing, so I actually did review the previous three authorizations on this, and it was in order. So I wrote a uh, a county attorney opinion, and Travis wrote a county administrator opinion that everything was in order and that there was no reason not for the refinancing not to go through, and they closed a couple of weeks ago. So it's really just a um informational item, but also to tell you that we do have a complete file now of all of the past documents, so when this comes up again, we don't go, have to go back, um, you know, square one. I think the other item, Madam Chair, was the cigarette tax ordinance, but that's redundant, I think, to Mr. Stonehill's presentation. At my level, I think that I can jump in whenever Mr. Stonehill wants, but I just wanted to tell you in my report that we did draft the ordinance itself, there's a lot of other moving parts to it, than just the ordinance, personnel, oversight, implementation, stamps and dyes, um, uh, selling, auditing, getting them, uh, stamps out there, making sure that the wholesalers and retailers are all notified in time, uh, so that this can take effect on July the 1st, but uh, for my portion, we did draft it, it is a robust uh ordinance, um, looked at a lot of other ordinances throughout the Commonwealth, of course, there were only two counties to look at, because they were the only ones authorized um to do it, uh, cities and towns were taxing, and so um, there, I just wanted to to thank or put in a plug from his heart in her office, she looked at a lot of other uh folks and spoke with their offices. Mr. Stonehill, um, I don't know how many folks he talked to from Richmond to Winchester to Southwest Virginia and and all, and uh, and there's a lot of lifting going on, but for my part, uh, the ordinance is pretty comprehensive, and you, you never know until you start using it. We've also had contacts from various organizations on both sides, like the, the people that don't want you to do it, the people that want you to do it, we even got one that said we, we would rather you not impose the tax, I thought that was interesting, uh, from someone who would be taxed as a result of it. And then finally, going backwards, Neiman and I were on several calls, um, over the past eight, 10 months, uh, with the Department of Taxation and other working groups throughout the state to determine the best course for this with all of the players, including the Northern Virginia Tax Board and the potential Northern Next Tax Tax Board. So, the ordinance is in order, and I think after Mr. Stonehill's presentation, we'll be asking of, for an advertisement and public hearing, which is required, and we'll be way ahead uh on that front so that we can get going on the implementation.
Thank you, Mr. Britton, and there was, you had one other item here?
Yes, uh, I, I forgot about that.
Personal to you, sir, so let's not overlook it.
Yeah, uh, so back, what, exactly a year ago, um, in my, and and I have no problem doing this in, in, in open session, it's typo, I think, um, for whatever reason, do you have two contract employees, me and the county attorney and county minister? Anyway, so it says in my contract, um, that PTO, personal time off, vacation time, shall be accrued at the same rate as other county employees, which would have been fine if it stopped there, but then it said at six hours, and it's actually eight hours, so I would just ask that you either make it eight hours, which is the maximum, or strike the and six hours in my contract and make it retroactive to March 27th, 2020.
Does anyone have questions about that specific item before we deal with that one?
It will break my intention, and I pulled it in, for whatever reason, it says six.
I'm ju, we're, I'll, I'll circle back to that, but I do want to just take care of that first, and I need a motion a second, and then we will go back and entertain all other questions from members, from Mr. Britton.
I move to replace six with eight on, on the county attorney's contract and make it retroactive to March 27th of 2020.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Britton. And Mr. Granger, did you have any questions about anything else in his county attorney report? report? All right, thank you, Mr. Stonehill. Ms. Bender?
Mr. Britton, I just want a clarification. Cameron Hills, when it was a golf course, they had alcohol on the premises, correct? If I remember?
They definitely did. Whether they had it for every second that they were open, but they had an ABC permit, and to my knowledge, they had it at all times, beer in line.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Bush?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Going to your comments on the cigarette tax, and you mentioned that you had drafted an ordinance. Is there a way we can get, or at least I can get, a draft of this ordinance prior to any action on this? I'd like to review it myself as well.
Oh, yes, it was sent to all the board members. It was supposed to be in the--
Did I miss it?
I don't know. Here you go.
Thank you. My email has, and this is a good time to mention it, if people have sent me emails, and you, I have not responded, please reengage. I've had email issues over the last two weeks. So I finally was able to get that cleaned up.
Everyone else is shaking their head as well. So I apologize. It was sent out by me. I don't know how that didn't get there. And then it was supposed to be included in the packet. So we were going to advertise this for public hearing.
Mr. Britton? I have it. It looks like it was sent internally. A few of us did see it in administration, but it doesn't look like it was circulated everywhere. So if we could make sure--
Yeah. I'll resend it to y'all, but also, so it was up for a public hearing for the 20th. Did y'all want us to resend it out and put it in as a draft, and then push it off for public hearing until May? Or do you want to just keep it on for the April 20th public hearing?
Madam Chair--
Mr. Bush, go ahead.
Thank you. I don't have a problem staying with the timeline as it is. I just want time, because I still have time to vote on this. So if there's any text amendments that I would request, I could do it at that point. At least we could advertise going forward. I just wanted to be able to go through this, in case there was anything that stuck out to me. But I have no problem with the timeline as it is.
Mr. Granger? Mr. Stonehill? Ms. Bender? Okay.
Yeah, it appears that there, I'm looking at the same email now, it appears there's just a, an oversight, it didn't make it into the board packet. I'll forward that on to y'all right away. I can say that we've had two or three iterations with the committee that you appointed, and it was sent out to the committee. Mr. Stonehill had a number of edits, and then he brought on, I can't remember his name right now, but a real good fella. Yeah, John Conley, and he had some comments. And Judy brought on some folks, and it was really helpful. And we did make some amendments to it, but it's pretty long and robust. So if you want to take a look at it, but I'll resend that out to the board right now, and make sure obviously that it's in its full format for advertising purposes.
Please do. Thank you. Any other questions for the county attorney before we move on? All right. Let's go down to presentations and reports. Sheets to Sheets Run Presentation by Mr. Chris Chalkley. Welcome, Mr. Chalkley.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for having me back. To recap, the Sheets to Sheets Trail Run, that was about three to four weeks ago. Next slide, please. So I know you know all about the Sheets to Sheets Trail Run, but a quick overview for everybody. It is a 14-mile trail run. It starts at the Sheets, across from the middle school, goes along Route 3 in Comorn for about a mile and a half, then connects to the Dogland Railroad Heritage Trail, and follows that all the way to the Sheets and Dogland. Along the way, there's some fun aid stations. We offer apple pie, and smores at a campfire, and peeps, and all sorts of comfort food along the way. So it's just a fun event. It's a non, it's an untimed, non-competitive event. We encourage people to just take it easy and enjoy the trail. And then when you get to the finish, the King George County School buses shuttle you back to the parking area at King George Middle School. Next slide, please. So in my office, we always start with the bottom line up front, so no different here. I'm proud to say that despite all the challenges presented by COVID, it was a very, very successful event this year. We were blessed with perfect weather. For many runners, many participants, this was the first in-person event, first run or first race in a year. Many of them, last year's event was the last run they did, and this is the first run they did. So everybody, there was just an energy. People wanted to get out and get back to some sense of normalcy. We had many limitations, many protocols in place for COVID-19. And I'm pleased to say, even looking back now, looking at the survey results, looking at all the people we interviewed, I can't recall a single comment about, people didn't even notice, you know, the extra steps we had to take, or complained about it. So good news is there. I think people are used to it, and it just proves that you can run an event safely. You'll see that there's a new tourism focus this year. You'll see increased community engagement. And overall, I think you'll see that it's maturing from, this is the fourth year, you'll see it's maturing from a small, local event, to more of a professionally managed regional event. Maybe a small region, but we can grow that region. This is the, we also have a tie-in this year. This is the second race in the King George Trail Series. And the last part I'll mention is, another thing I was able to do this year is just gather a lot of data, test some concepts, to see what works, what doesn't, and what can we grow? How can we grow this? How can we have even more focus on tourism going forward? So we have lots of ideas for next year. Next slide, please. So the numbers you're probably interested in, we had 227 participants. And because of, you know, some people were not able, or were not comfortable, running in person, we offered a virtual option. 15 took advantage of that, and then 212 in person. We even had three dogs out there. Next. So this is, like I said, it's a fourth year, continues to grow very, very fast, 51% growth this year. And we sold out in about a year. Next, please. So that also shows that, again, one of those many limitations for COVID this year was, there was a limit of 250 participants, and that's runners, spectators, and volunteers. We were capped at 250. Now, that limit was removed by the governor about two to three weeks before the event, so we were able to squeeze in a few more, a couple dozen more runners. But we were capped, and it worked, still works very well. Next. We had about 8% no-shows, which is almost exactly the same as last year. Next. And again, not that I'm trying, but the race seems to appeal much more to women. The gender breakdown is 73% female, 27% male, as far as the age ranges. Next. The vast majority in the 30 to 40, 49 range. I believe 70% of the participants were in that age range. The youngest, by the way, was 18, and the oldest was 70. Next. And this is where everybody came from this year. So we had six states and the district represented. We had as far west as Nashville, south to Wilmington, North Carolina. We had a runner from Philadelphia. He's actually a Wawa employee. And if you zoom in, you can see that, you know, King George is a healthy representation there, a huge group in Stafford especially, and then going up through Northern Virginia. The red pins, by the way, those are the no-shows. Next. We had many sponsors this year. Terrific sponsorship over on the right. And by the way, outside, I've got sponsor bags for each of you, and also the finisher bag. So you can see what the participants of this event, what they took home, and what they, you know, if they came from Nashville, or Arlington, or wherever, you know, this is what they're taking back, their impression of King George. Many local organizations helped out. We had the high school cross-country team helping out the finish line. Friends of Caledon helped with the finisher tent and the announcing. Of course, we couldn't do this without Jim Lynch and his crew at the Friends of the Dogland Railroad Heritage Trail. They, among many other things, they built, in a record amount of time, 120-foot bridge across the swampy area towards the end. That was really, you know, almost saved the race. It prevented people from sloshing through a swamp at the end. We had the amateur radio operators out, providing emergency end-to-end communications. Of course, we had the sheriff's office out again, providing traffic management. And I mentioned the King George County Schools providing transportation. That worked very, very smoothly this year. In total, I counted 55 volunteers in support of this event. Next. As far as the local economic impact, you know, I tried to shop local wherever I could. I spent over $2,400 at Sign Works of King George on shirts and signs. I bought food and drink at Walmart and Food Lion. All of the dog finishers got a finisher bag as well. Those were donated by Delightful Doggy Treats of King George. And local services provided the porta-johns. Now, new this year, we had official race hotels, two hotels, the My Place and the Holiday and Express, both located right there at the finish line. And the partnership there, one thing we did is we offered transportation, again, by a school bus that morning. So if you stayed, if you're coming from out of town, you stayed in the local hotel, or the race hotel, we picked you up after breakfast, brought you to the start line, and you essentially ran back, and then you walked right through the woods after you were done, back to your room. The exact number of hotel nights, it's hard to determine. As far as the official race hotels, we had six reservations, and that matches, six people got off the bus. But I have reason to believe that the numbers, the impacts are actually much higher. So if you look at the survey, for example, and this was, you know, 52% of people responding, 16 said they booked a hotel in Dogland. So I suspect they went to, you know, some of the other hotels, based on their preferences. So if you do the math, I'm guessing 20 to 25 hotel nights was the impact from this event. Next slide, please. This is a charity event, so this year I was able to donate $3,300 to local charities. The majority of that, $2,600, went to Sheets for the Kids. And even though that's the corporate employee Sheets charity, it actually benefits local children. So what they do is each store sponsors 16, I believe, children. And what they do is they'll shop for gifts and necessities around the holidays. So with three stores in King George, that's 48 local children that benefited directly from this donation. You see Mr. Lynch there, accepting a gift for Friends of the DRHT, again, for their support in trail maintenance, and also a little donation to the Friends of Caledon for their assistance as well. Next slide, please. So you're probably wondering how I invested the grant you gave me last year. So a few things. It was mainly, it went to the Visit King George logo, which I'm sure you're familiar with. I see one right there on the back of the laptop. And also the photo backdrop and the structure that went with it. So this is a common, a common thing at races. And my vision, if you want to go to the next slide, was, and we're starting to see it. So we had people come through, they finished, they're in a good mood, they took, you know, happy, smiling pictures in front of this backdrop. We had some issues with the back light in against the logo. We'll fix that next year. But still, they posted this to social media, which is very, very powerful. And in many cases, they, you know, they updated their profile picture, and you can, again, see they're coming from some event there. You see the Visit King George logo in the background, and you see the Run KMG, or sorry, Run KG hashtag with it. So again, there's no better advertising than social media, so that's really what my focus was this year, and how I invested the TAC grant. So thank you for that. Next. Speaking of photos, there's almost 900 of them online at sheets2sheets.com. You can see one of the canine finishers there. You see one of the two Ainsley's Angels wheelchair teams. You see the first female finisher there. She was from Stafford. You see a scene from the campsite aid station. And then at the bottom right, you see the section of that bridge that I mentioned earlier that helped runners get through the swampy section towards, at mile 12. Next. As far as social media engagement, 31,000 hits, or 31,000 page views on Facebook from the start of this event. So that spike on the left is in November, when I opened registration, and the larger spike was on race day. Instagram reach, not as great, but more consistent, for some reason. Next. That just shows that the audience, as far as both gender and age, is pretty much consistent with what I saw on registrations. Next. Okay, so I want to give some highlights from the survey. I had very good response. 52% of the runners participated in the survey. I was very pleased with that, got a lot of good feedback. Next. 93% had run at least a half marathon, so I just kind of give you some idea of the audience that we were going for. Most prefer email. Email still rules, as far as how they want to get information. Next. Safety. So I tried to capture, you know, how safe did you feel at this event? 97.5% said they felt very or extremely safe. And that encompasses everything from the harrowing run along the highway for a mile and a half, to running on a secluded trail, to participating in an in-person event in the COVID era. So I'm glad, I'm very pleased to see those numbers. People felt safe at the event. Next. The finisher swag, 95% rated it good to awesome. It's unique. You don't get a medal, like you do at most. You get a Sheets mug and a bunch of other Sheets food. That's very popular. Next. And then I tried to gauge the importance of various things. So the hotel shuttle, for instance. And that number, 32%, that tells me, again, helps to defend my premise, that I think there was more than, certainly more than six people that stayed in a hotel from this event. A couple of numbers there, where people, you know, they're used to competitive races, where there's timing. I hear you, but that's not the vibe we're going for. 82% thought the charity partnership was very important. And every year, I ask this question, every year, off the charts, the highest rated, or the most important aspect of the race is the support from the King George Sheriff's Office. So I appreciate that every year. Next. And then lastly, I asked, you know, have you been on the rail trail before? And 36% had never been on the trail before. So we brought, by my math, that's 80-some people that had never experienced the DRHT. So that's, again, another point that we're trying to get to here, and I'm sure, Mr. Lynch, if you're listening, you're proud of that number. Next. Then I asked, you know, how do you value this, what is the value of this event compared to similar races? And 99% rated it four to five stars. And lastly, next, please. The last question was the standard, would you recommend this to a friend or a family member? And that generated a net promoter score of 86, which is very, very good. The average, I believe, is 58 for, across thousands of organizations and events. So I'm very pleased with that. Next. So probably the most important questions are the write-ins. You know, somebody takes time to write about those two questions, what do you like, and what would you suggest we do differently? If they took time to write that, that's more important than the multiple choice. So I was very pleased with a lot of comments. The only problem is it's a little overwhelming. I had 130-some paragraphs, times two. And so I tried to find a way to quantify that a bit. Next slide. I took all those things, and I bucketed them into these general categories. And then I looked at each comment, and it's either positive or negative. It's either a promoter, or it's a detractor for that topic. And then I plotted that. Next, please. And we'll just run through a couple of these. The outlier in the top right corner is the people that said, I loved everything, or I would improve nothing. So appreciate the vote of confidence, but that doesn't give anything specific. So that's an outlier. If you click through there, the first one, for example, people really liked the vibe, the energy, the humor. The trail scenery, of course, is very popular. You start to get a little bit of negative sentiment on the timing aspect, but again, that's people that are used to having competitive races and timed races. Aid stations, you start to see, is probably the most negative there, and that's because we ran out of pie, and we ran out of smores. So some people didn't get all the food, as everybody. Swag, you know, some negative sentiment there was because people are used to getting medals. So they're asking, hey, why don't I get a medal? They don't understand they're getting something much more practical. The size and community aspect, I think it's interesting, because many people said they liked the small size of it, that it's a community feel to it. But you also had several people say, but I want a little bigger, so my friends can get in, and it doesn't sell out. So we're trying to find that sweet spot. It might be 300, it might be, I don't know. I think we can easily support 300. And then a few others, you can just click through. The most negative overall is, and I would definitely agree with it, is the start waves. So that was one of the restrictions placed on us. Because of COVID, we had to start waves at 25. It was just very rushed, and we knew-- It was just very rushed, and we knew that, but we'll improve on that next time. Next. And lastly, I want to thank you board for several things. First, the tourism, of course, the grant, the TAC grant. Thank you for your physical presence before and during the event. Some of you helped with the bridge construction, but also on race day, I saw several of you out there, and of course, Mr. Minor. And then lastly, next, the King George Middle School paving. You might remember on March sixth, so this is just days before my race, they had not paved that area leading from the parking area to the Sheetz. So you can imagine two hundred people in the dark walking through this gully. So it was both a safety issue and not a good first impression. Two hundred people coming to the county, that's the first thing they see is stumbling to the start line. So all it took was one email, and I don't know how you did it, but thank you for getting that done. And the day before the race, that was how it looked. So thank you for, thank you for that, appreciate it. Next. And that's it. So we're already making plans for next year, March twelfth, 2022. If you're a runner, hope to see you out there. Thank you, any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chalkley. Mr. Granger? Mr. Stonehill?
Thank you for the presentation, great, very thorough presentation. I just wanted to say, I was there at the finish line, I did not run. But everybody, everybody who came past me just had a smile on their face. Granted, it was a beautiful day, I mean, you couldn't ask nicer weather. But, I mean, everybody's comment was, great race, everybody had a smile on their face, even the dogs, tongues out, but they had big smiles on their face. And when I was there at the finish line, I did notice a lot of people actually going back to that cut through over the gas line, going back to My Place and the Walmart parking lot and all that kind of stuff. So that was a really great idea that they could get back in there, you know, for the folks that were staying there. And it just seemed like, yeah, like you said, it was a great, great day. And, you know, I just, I look forward to it in the future, and thanks again.
Thank you for coming out.
Ms. Bender?
I just want to say, good idea with the photo booth. I used to be a cross-country coach, and the kids, any event we went to, they were in front of that photo book and putting on an Instagram, Facebook, Twitter, whatever, social media, TikTok. So that was a good idea to promote King George, thank you.
Mr. Bush?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So thank you very much for the presentation. I really liked seeing the impact with hotels and how you tied that in. I think that's something that the community needs to start seeing more of as we're investing tourism dollars, how that actually manifests and works with things. So great job on that. And thank you for showing really the way this has grown in four years. So that shows that what's happening in the partnership with the Sheets to Sheets, how it actually is impacting our tourism. So thank you for showing that growth. I think that was very important to have that visual. That's all I have, Madam Chair, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chalkley, for coming out tonight and showing us what our return on investment is for our tourism fund dollars. We greatly appreciate that. As a former grant writer, I appreciate data, 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 and that was phenomenal, the graphs and the charts and the social media hits, that was really impressive to see that. So thank you very much for doing that as well. And as far as the Turn Lane Project, we need to thank Mr. Cusenberry here for pulling the thread on that. That was all him. So that was a locally administered project, and when we expressed the need to him, he made sure it happened. So thank you, Travis, very much for that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, Mr. Beal. Secondary Six-Year Plan Presentation.
Good evening. Good to be with you all. You might get tired of seeing this presentation because I'm going to give the same one at the public hearing. We're scheduled to do that on the eighteenth, I believe, in May. But I did want to get before you, get this information in front of you before then, so you can start thinking about what your priorities are. So secondary six-year plan, of course, in government, we have to give it an acronym, SSYP. Secondary is all your secondary routes in the county. So every route that is six hundred or higher, route number six hundred or higher would be your secondary routes. And it's a six-year plan, so the funding is in a six-year cycle. So as long as we have enough projects in the plan to stay, we do it every year. So as long as we have enough projects to stay ahead of our pace of construction, we always are able to amend the plan every year. Next slide, I'm sorry, go back to, let me talk about that. There are two different funding sources, one's a telefees and one's a district grant for the unpaved roads. So this just shows that you have six years for funding, and you can see there's almost a million dollars in the plan. There are four roads that are currently in the plan, two of them here on this slide, Rockabye Lane and Ivy Hill Loop. So after you identify your priorities, we'll come up with a budget for that road, and then we'll assign the funding to those roads. So you can, you can see the budget for Rockabye is two-hundred-and-fifty-eight thousand, and Ivy Hill Loop is a hundred-and-fifty thousand. Those are currently funded, so we'll be starting construction on them this summer. The next slide shows the other two plant, other two roads, Rixey Road and Chestnut Hill Loop. Those are funded, you can see the funding is available in 2022, which is July of this year. So we'll begin starting preliminary engineering and environmental work on those. And then those are the only two, those are the only four roads. So you can see there's funding in the plan for twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-seven, but we don't have any projects assigned for those roads. The next slide shows where all that money is. We parked it in the countywide, so we have countywide funds for traffic services, for right-of-way, and for engineering and survey. And I don't see a need to keep a lot of money in any of those countywides as long as we're not aware of some need. So you can see, last year, because of COVID, we didn't do anything for the secondary six-year plans. We didn't have a public hearing, we didn't add any projects. So we took all the money that was allocated for last year and just parked it in that engineering and survey countywide. So once you identify priorities, we'll move that money to those projects. I would recommend keeping about ten thousand dollars in that countywide in case something comes up. We'll have funding there, we won't have to shuffle it around. So if you, if you do the math, there's about eight-hundred thousand dollars that we need to allocate funding, allocate projects for between the money, the extra money in the countywide engineering and survey, and then the four-hundred-and-twenty-six thousand dollars in the unpaved roads funds. So as you consider your priorities, a few things to think about. These roads must be, must already be in the secondary system. So these are your existing state-maintained gravel roads. We can't confuse rural rustic program with the rural additions, so we're not adding new roads to the system. We're just surface treating the existing roads. They can't carry more than fifteen hundred vehicles a day, which you don't have any that are close to that. The projects must be in the secondary six-year plan to get built, so we don't build a road out of a countywide. So you need to identify specific projects. And it must be predominantly local traffic, so we wouldn't want to surface treat a road that was on a cut through or had a high volume. And we would ask the board to limit growth on these roads in the future. It's a rural rustic program. The roads are surface treated, but they aren't, that pavement section isn't real thick, so it wouldn't take a lot of heavy traffic to tear it up. So this is really for local, typically residential traffic. We wouldn't want you to do a big rezoning on a rural rustic road. And then as far as drainage, typically, we go in and replace pipes before we make the investment of surface treatment. But usually, there's not a large drainage improvement that has to be made and associate along with the project. Next slide. This shows all the unpaved roads in the county. You can see you have almost twenty miles of unpaved roads in the county. The four there that I talked about with the column, the Y in the column are already in the plan. You can see the traffic counts. Marmion Lane has the highest volume that are on that list. Everything that's in yellow there is over fifty. And as long as we have roads that have more than fifty vehicles a day, I would ask that you focus on the ones that are over fifty vehicles a day. We have funding, we will develop an estimate specific to each route that you choose and assign the funding. Typically, those estimates run seventy-five to a hundred dollars a foot. So with about eight-hundred thousand dollars to assign, we need projects to cover about one and three-quarter miles of road. If you're interested in doing and putting a road on the list that is longer than one and three-quarter miles, I would suggest that we phase it. We could do, you know, phase one and phase two, and get part of the road in the plan, and then come back later in future years and add the rest of it. So that is, that is everything I have planned for the presentation. I'll take questions and any comments you all have.
Mr. Beal, do you have a recommendation or a suggestion you'd like to offer?
This is a, obviously, this helps the citizens of the county. They get rid of a gravel road and have a surface-treated road. But in full disclosure, it helps us as well, because we have to grade all these gravel roads, and we get complaints on the gravel roads. So it lessens our maintenance burden. And just in talking with the area headquarters, they identified Prim Road as one that they get a lot of complaints on and have to grade fairly often. And that is one of the higher-volume roads in the county. It is almost three miles long, so we would have to break that up into some phases if that was your priority. But this is the, this is your priority, you get to choose what goes in the plan.
Thank you. And Mr. Cusenberry, does staff have a suggestion as well?
We didn't, we didn't have a suggestion.
Very good. All right, I'll open it to questions from members. Mr. Granger, would you like to start, sir?
I don't have any questions, I appreciate you coming out and updating stats, so thank you for providing that. And I'm certainly in to discuss, but I'll let everyone ask questions first.
Okay. Mr. Stonehill?
No questions, just thank you for the presentation, thanks for coming out.
Ms. Bender?
Yes, I have a question, and I bring this up every time, is I get complaints from people who live on Alden Road, especially that part where it's very swampy. And I had mentioned to your previous person who is in charge of our area, and even if some kind of bridge or pipe could be put in that swampy, or I've been on it when it gets really bad, and to my knowledge, there's quite a few older people that live on that road. And so that, I will always bring that up to the people that live on Alden Road as something to be done. And you mentioned earlier, maybe in pieces, so I just want to bring that to your attention.
If there's one area there that's swampy or drainage is poor, we could look at that. I can look at that and see what we can do, and maybe between now and the public hearing, I'll get back with you and let you know what my recommendation would be.
Yeah, I would appreciate that, and I can show you the exact spot, because it's one particular low-lying area. But I really appreciate it, and I'm sure the citizens of Alden Road appreciate it.
Mr. Bush?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So you were recommending Prim Road, and you said it was something that would have to be done in stages. So we didn't have anything for last year, correct? Because we weren't able to hold a public hearing. So could, is that, can we mark that as, let's say, last year's and make it a priority for this year as well? Is that a possibility?
Last year's funding is in the plan right now.
Okay.
If we had done this last year, you would have about, you would have less mileage, half the mileage to allocate. So we would have about four-hundred thousand dollars to allocate, instead of eight-hundred thousand dollars to allocate.
Okay.
The, you're basically doing last year and this year now.
All right.
But we, we have enough, we have enough money to do about one and three-quarter miles. So if, if you all choose to do Prim Road, you know, we can look at, you know, as much as we can get done, we'll go out and find a section that looks reasonable, you know, start here and stop here, and, you know, try to get as much of it done, as much put in the plan as we can.
Yeah, because I was looking at the length, but I was also looking at the vehicles per day, I think. But that's something for my colleagues to work out. I thank you for answering that, though. Thank you. That's all I have, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Bush. Mr. Beal, I don't really have any questions for you. I just wanted to say thank you for the outstanding job done on Will Loop. It looked to me that that was fairly well-finished, on time. And the citizens that I saw when I passed by there several times during the process were very pleased with how you all did it and how you took care of their driveways and made sure they were properly piped and ditched and everything. So thank you very much for that.
Thank you for those comments. I'd be remiss if I didn't point out Carter, Carter White's here, and he oversees our rural rustic program, and he's out there sweating with the guys over the summer, making sure those get right. So he heard those comments, and I appreciate his work on that, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. White. So does the board have a preference to try to move forward with something tonight? Or do you need some time to digest this? Anyone have a preference? Go ahead, Mr. Granger.
I don't mind discussing some of them. The only other road I would bring up in particular, they all need to be done. And there's some, I don't know if anyone's been down Barry Warf, I know it's way at the bottom, and there's only ten vehicles per day, and it's a mile and a half long. It was terrible, like terrible. But it's hard to justify doing that with so few vehicles on it and being so long. So, you know, at some points, got to get them done, but I appreciate Mr. Beal's points about trying to focus on the fifty and over. So with that in mind, Canyonway off of Port Conway, that's really ruddy, not in the best of shape, in my opinion. It's not real long, if you look at vehicles per day, it's fifty, which is like right at that number. But I also like to look at it from a perspective of vehicles per day, per mile, which kind of gives you a little more idea for like bang for your buck. So it might not be as many vehicles, but you could do more shorter ones, which could, in the long run, have a much bigger impact on people. So that would be one in particular. Some of the other ones, I mean, at the end of the day, they all get done. But, and it's been a couple of years, I've hit some of those roads that I've explicitly gotten on them. But, you know, I think Woodland Way, last time I was on it, it didn't seem terrible. It's not real long, though, and the number of vehicles per day is pretty high. So, you know, it's going to, you know, obviously, take wear and tear as well. So maybe that one wouldn't be a bad idea, especially looking again at bang for your buck, because it's not a real particularly long one. Other than that, Prim was one of the ones I had that was not good. But the problem is, it's just so, it's not a problem, but it's long. And so you're right, it, you're like, hey, we're going to save up, and it's going to take however long to get this whole road done, which is one road. And then there's, you know, still like another twenty roads that I've got to get done.
Yeah, we don't, we don't want to, we don't want to put something in the plan that's going to take ten or fifteen years to find, so we'll try to keep it a six-year plan.
Correct. So, and it sounds like it could fit in there. It might be, you're saying, basically, two years worth, about a mile and a half, or mile, one-point-three miles. Prim Road was two, three, it's going to be like right at six years, one in it roughly, like based off that. So, you know, I wouldn't mind saying, let's work on that one as well. But those two others, maybe, I'd look at as well.
Thank you, Mr. Granger. Mr. Stonehill?
I like the idea of Prim, but it's just so long, you know, and it is also, it's used quite a bit of a, through a cut-through road a lot from over there on the round hill over to the west end of the county, or I should say, the east end of the county, headed that way. You know, I'm looking, I kind of agree with Mr. Granger, looking at some of the smaller roads, the shorter roads that we can get more bang for our buck, you know, looking at some of these roads, you know, like Dixon Lane and, you know, Green Law, things like that, that are actually a very short road, but they do have very high, not very high, but higher vehicles per day. You know, how can we, how can we please the citizens with, on these roads, more so than a road that's more of a kind of a cut-through type road? So I'd be more inclined to look at a shorter road with a higher vehicle per So I'd be more inclined to look at a shorter road with a higher vehicle per day.
Ms. Bender, did you want to add anymore?
Yeah, I want to echo for Green Law Way, thinking about that's where we have a park, a Wilmot Landing. So that would be important if we wanted to promote people to go down and fish and look at the Rappahannock to make sure that road is in good condition.
So can you clarify, Mr. Beal? Because I feel like Green Law Way, you're talking about the dead end of Green Law Way down here, coming back up to Wilmot. So that isn't going to achieve the desired outcome is what I'm thinking.
To follow up, I'm not familiar with the road.
Yeah. Okay.
I have Carter's.
Am I, am I thinking on the right?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, but it's on the right.
Yeah, it's on a separate road that cuts off to the right. Wilmot Land, Wilmot Road is the one that actually goes to the landing proper. So it would be a completely separate road.
Still a good idea. You know it a little bit more, you traveled those roads more than I did, so.
Mr. Bush?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I think I'm, I'm liking the idea of Prim. And we're going to have to start on it at some point because every year it's going to come to us. We're going to be looking at the length. We're going to say, well, you know, maybe we can take care of some smaller roads, but Prim's going to keep getting pushed, pushed back because of the length. I like the idea of multiple phases. I think we just need to, we need to attack Prim, get, get Prim done. That would be my priority, number one. Secondary would be Dixon Lane for me. That's all I have, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you all. I'm at Prim Road, if we can get that started. I'd really like to see that happen. That's, it's, it's in really bad shape. And I personally received a number of complaints about it last fall and winter. And the winter before, the first winter that I served on the board. So for me, looking at the state of disrepair, the feedback from you all regarding the complaints you all get too, and the vehicles per day, the traffic on it, I'd be in favor of Prim.
Okay. We can go ahead and, we'll go ahead and ride that route and maybe find a couple of places where we could break it up into different phases and come back with a recommendation.
So do you need a motion from us today?
No.
No?
No, we would need that after the public hearing as to what you want to add, which routes you want to add.
Okay. So I'm hearing two of us definitely for Prim.
I, so I would put Canyon ahead and then I'd put Prim, just because Canyon's in, in bad repair and it's short. So, but then I could go with Prim after that because that one, I agree, is got challenges more so than some other ones.
Do you want to start on the round hill side?
So you came in for canning at a quarter mile, right? And Prim is almost three. And you said you had one and three quarters available. Or, yeah. So could we do? One and three quarters is what I wrote down, available. Like, so you said $75 to $100 per foot, which will buy you about one and three quarters of a mile of pave, right? So could we do the .25 of canning and one and a half of Prim? And it would basically split Prim in half essentially? Because it's about three?
Yeah, well, we could ride the route and find a good place, you know, somewhere around a mile and a half to phase it.
Consensus of the board?
That's what I like, but I'll let everyone else speak.
Okay. Mr. Stonehill?
If you can find out a good spot to see how much of Prim we can get done. You know, if you're going to split it in half on those numbers or I mean, I guess I'm good with that.
Ms. Bender?
I'm going to say no, because I still would like that one section of Alden Road looked at if we're breaking stuff up into sections. So I'm going to say no.
Okay. And Mr. Bush, you were good with that?
I am, but with that, if, if, if Mr. Beal mentioned that they could look at that section on Alden Road, if they could follow up with that, it may just be something like a culvert. I don't know. But if they could look at that, yes, I absolutely agree with, with what we worked out. So, yes, ma'am.
Okay. So we have consensus. And then also, if you can please take a look at Alden Road as well.
What I'll do, I'll go ahead and we'll prepare an estimate and we'll stick those routes in the draft for the public hearing. So hopefully everything will be buttoned up. Till then.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. White. All right. Next item, REFA presentation by Mr. Nick Minor, Director of Economic Development and Tourism.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board. I'm going to be providing you guys an overview of a regional industrial facility authority. Essentially, this is a separate entity, regional separate entity from the county that potentially help us recruit or attract new investment in economic development projects to the county. Next slide, please. So the way that we've been giving this presentation is sort of starting what it does not do. So what it does not do is require locality to participate or invest in a project, tax or regulate, create a locality, create locality, locality liability or exposure and replace local EDAs. Next slide, please. So REFA basics created by two or more localities, at least two of which need to be counties or cities to collaborate on development of regional industrial properties or mega sites slash mega projects. Second, and the locality share the cost in tax revenue using the REFA as the administrator. It's created in the Virginia Regional Industrial Facilities Act in 1997, Chapter 64, Title 15.2, Code of Virginia. It's created by concurrent, concurrent ordinances to be filed with the Secretary of the Commonwealth. And then fifth, generally two members from each locality, member locality serving four year terms, which may be staggered. You can also have alternates if you'd like to, if you, if you would like to not have a board member serve on it. You can have alternates, but it is recommended that a board member does be on the committee or be on the REFA to sort of know what's happening with different deals and different transactions. Next slide, please. So preliminary documentation, the agreement, established rights and obligations. It may describe if desired, an agreement to share costs. It may describe if desired, an agreement to share revenues. Cost sharing and revenue sharing arrangements need not be the same across all facilities managed by the REFA. And then below the two asterisks were marked down here. As particular projects are developed and financed, there will be other documentation unique to the transaction or an example of participation or transaction agreement. Next slide, please. So this is just to sort of show you guys the different REFAs that are established throughout the Commonwealth as it stands now. It is missing the Northern Neck REFA, which was established last year, which includes Richmond County, Northumberland and Westmoreland Counties. Next slide, please. So some examples of this, of existing REFAs is the West Virginia Regional Industrial Facility Authority. It's created in 2013. And as you guys saw from the previous slide, a lot of these REFAs were created in rural areas of the state, southwest Virginia and on that 81 corridor. So the other example is the Woodhaven Technology Park located on the outskirts of Roanoke County in the city of Roanoke, primarily used to attract high tech projects along that Virginia Tech corridor. So the other part of establishing a REFA is the ability to go after the Virginia Collaborative Jobs Act, which I've written it down here because it's quite the long benefit. But what it grants is participating localities can recover 45% of the total amount of personal income tax withheld from employees holding new jobs at the company for over a period of six years. So meaning if they receive, if that locale, if those two localities receive an economic development project, then that benefit will kick in. So once you receive those funds, you can only use it for a specific reason. And what I have listed here is utility expansion on or off the site, public or private installation or capacity development of broadband, railroad or road access costs, site acquisition and development and workforce training. So that's one of the benefits of utilizing. Next slide, please. So the next steps, and this is very general. Obviously, this is, if this is something that the board would like to pursue, these essentially would be the next steps. I'm not making a recommendation. But the FRA was rewarded Go Virginia money last year to retain Patton, Warrenham, Patton and Diamondstein to write up the notice of public hearing and the ordinance which was provided to the county. We do have those documents as it stands now. And then the next step would be an agreement of two or more localities to form the regional entity, go to a legal review, advertise, public hearing, and then obviously adopt. So now I'm happy to take any questions. And I believe Mr. Roberts on the Fredericksburg Regional Alliance is on if you do have questions that you want to directly pose to the FRA, since this was an initiative that they are pushing throughout the region. So, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Minor. Mr. Granger, would you like to start us out as this is on the agenda? You asked that we bring it back for reconsideration.
Yes, ma'am, I appreciate it. So, Mr. Minor, thank you for coming and presenting upon it. We had had it come to us at one point to look at. And so I'm going to ask, I've talked with Mr. Roberts a little bit about it as well. Are there any other localities? Because it's, it's looking, the motivation was try to get Stafford was basically that FRA region. So to overlay that same group. And have any of those localities currently signed the REFA?
So as it stands right now, I'm not aware of any locality that has taken the step to adopt the ordinance.
If, and if we were to adopt the ordinance, we would just be the first. And there's no obligation in any way to the county to pony up any dollars or to, we're not obligated in any way.
No, sir. So
e- even if another locality were to adopt the ordinance, we're still not obligated in any way. It's only at, once you, it's just a tool to help facilitate economic development across the, the localities.
Right.
So for me, from that perspective, e- even though we'd be the first, I think it's something that we should entertain as far as adopting. Hopefully it would help spur on the other localities, at least some of them. At the end of the day, we would only really be using this if there was an opportunity to do a collaboration within a locality. But this would help to do that action. So personally, I think we should move forward with adopting, bringing the ordinance forth and adopting it. That's my personal take on it. Thank you, Mr. Minor.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Granger. Mr. Stonehill?
Thanks, Mr. Minor, for coming out. I've sat through a couple of meetings with some of the folks uptown about getting into, into a REFA. And, you know, it's, it's something that would benefit all of our counties together. It seems like everybody's very gung ho about doing it, doing it, doing it, and then kind of, it kind of falls on its face and not doing anything. This would be the only way we get gas here to the county. You know, it would, this would have, you know, if we formed a REFA with the other areas, this is the only way that we're going to get gas to the industrial park. And that's something that, you know, if it came down route, you know, three came through Stafford, you know, hit the Renaissance Fair area, all that kind of stuff. I mean, it would, it would take a collaborative effort of all the counties to try to get this here. That's the only way it's going to happen. So but in your, your presentation, you were talking about it, it does not require locality to participate or invest in a project. But if we don't put in, we don't get out. You know, if we don't, we don't give land or access or money, we don't get anything back money wise from that, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
You have to participate, you have to agree to some sort of agreement, sir.
Yeah, you got to play, you got to pay to play. So just to make sure, you know, obviously everybody knows about that. But I'm, I'm definitely for it. I mean, that's just my opinion. If we're going to have growth in this region and it to come here to King George as opposed to staying up in the other regions, I'd say we definitely need to go forward and, and look into this further. Like I said, every time we've talked about it in the past, everybody's gung ho about it and then it just kind of falls flat. So if we did start it, maybe the other folks would then follow in place with us. So I'm all for pursuing it.
Thank you, Ms. Bender.
This is something I definitely want to research a little bit more. And I understand the importance of it, just the, if, if there's a fee to it, which would be like GWRC that we pay a fee. And, you know, our budget is limited. How much can we afford? And that's something I would like to see some figures and numbers on to be able to say whether it's a good idea or not in the end for King George. So I would just like to do a little bit more research on it. Thank you.
So ma'am, I can address that question now if you like.
Please do, Mr. Minor.
So once you enter into an agreement for a project, whatever, whatever revenues that that project generates is paid for, well, it pays for itself essentially. So you would have no obligation as far as a fee goes, except for the upkeep until you have a project. So the projects essentially fund themselves or the REFA funds itself is how, is how it's generally supposed to work. Now you can negotiate that any way you like, depending on how you want to handle the project or how you want to handle the REFA. But typically what we've seen other REFAs do is use the project revenues to stand up the REFA to hold, to hold down the legal costs and administrative costs to running the REFA.
Adding to that, does it cost, well, the cost, is that shared amongst everybody? Or is the profit shared amongst the whole?
So it's whoever agrees to participate in that project. So for example, if the city of Fredericksburg wanted to collaborate with King George to purchase a property in King George, then we would purchase that property, the both localities would purchase that property. You'd probably roll some sort of site development cost into it. And then whoever lands on that property, then we negotiate as far as who receives those revenues, whether it's personal property, real estate, what have you. So if we put in more money into the transaction or if that land is valued more than the financial contribution that the city made, then obviously we would want to negotiate some sort of bigger split on the revenue and vice versa. So that's, and I use that example because that's probably the most likely example. So this is typically used for localities or cities, counties and cities. The city has less land, we have a lot of land, but they may have more capital to spend or to invest in, into industrial property. So it's sort of how I would see a transaction happening in the future. And you would probably see, well, there's other examples of like mega projects that we've seen come through, typically into billions of dollars, but they require 400 to 500 acres. Well, there are no 400 to 500 acre sites within the region that are ready, that are business ready, essentially is a term that they use. So you use the REFA to get these sites up to a business ready phase. And if they're business ready, then hopefully you'd land one of them and you're receiving multi billion dollar or you'd see multi million dollar tax revenue off of it. That obviously is split, but you wouldn't likely compete on that project without the REFA, without having to have a mechanism to compete. So that's the, that's how it's supposed to work in theory. It may be unique to us. Maybe we use it a different way to, to do infrastructure improvements. And then we split that cost based off of whatever revenues we generate off of it. But it's the, the need of the region or the need of the locality that wants to.
Sort of something like the Amazon deal that they shared, the locality shared that bringing Amazon to northern Virginia. All right, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Roberts, yes, I was just about to ask Ms. Bender if she would like you to clarify the response to her question as well. Go ahead, sir.
No, thank you. And I hate being a disembodied voice here, but Nick's done a great job explaining this. There are only two, two points I want to make. First, the city of Fredericksburg is interested in moving forward with this. So there is another jurisdiction prepared to move forward and is aware that this presentation is being made to you all this evening. Ms. Bender, to administer the authority until a transaction is done, we at the FRA are willing to do that. It's a de minimis cost. It's just the registration filings with the state probably will not even have to do a tax return until there's an actual transaction. And then for the directors of the authority, we would get DNO coverage. And I think the cost of that would be about $1,000 again, until a transaction is done. When you do a transaction, there's a separate agreement and it's called a participation agreement. And that's why we use the Roanoke example, where they set up a REFA three years, four years before they ever did a transaction. And then of their six jurisdictions, only four participated in that actual transaction. Whatever the costs are to administer the transaction is borne by that transaction and is negotiated among the participating entities who are involved. And it's all driven off of what the tax revenue. And it's all driven off of what the tax revenue that is generated there and how it is shared and split versus the expenses of developing the site. Nick has that agreement. Nick, if you don't, we'd be happy to send it to you, but that would show you how that works. So no, this is not fee-driven like GWRC. It does not operate that way.
Well, thank you very much for that clarification. I would love those documents so I could digest them a little bit more. Thank you.
Sure. Nick, do you have those?
I do, Mr. Roberts.
Okay.
Mr. Bush?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I appreciate this being brought. I support the idea of a REFA. But one thing that was said, talking about the gas line to King George, getting the gas line in the industrial park, I see that as a benefit Stafford County, not King George County, because if that gas line's coming through Stafford and it's going to come to our industrial park, their industrial park's closer to 95. I see that benefiting Stafford County. So the gas, gas line isn't a driver for me. However, the idea of a REFA and being the property that we have available, I see this as a, as a good tool in our toolbox, so I'd like to move forward with it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Nick. Thank you, Mr. Roberts. I don't have any questions of my own, so with that, I would entertain a motion.
So obviously, we can't adopt it, and I'm assuming everyone would want to see the ordinance first so we could look into it. So could we bring back? I don't, I don't think we need a motion necessarily tonight, but could we come consensus to, I know there's a draft REFA, could we provide that to everyone, and then at the next meeting actually go through it? And if there's any modifications anyone wants to make, then we could, if we can come to consensus, we could make a motion to advertise at that point for a public hearing.
Okay. So it sounds like everyone is in agreement. So Nick, if you can make sure everyone gets those documents.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Madam Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Roberts?
I apologize. If I could offer a suggestion since the city is interested.
Yes.
That you might, you know, maybe we take the members of, from the two local governments who are on the FRA board, so Mr. Granger and the mayor, the attorneys and the economic development directors, to sit down and review the ordinance and come to an agreement that the two localities who want to kick this off are comfortable with before we bring it back. So you don't adopt an ordinance and the city wants it tweaked, or, you know, it might help streamline the process.
Is that a good plan for you, Mr. Britton?
Yeah. Typically, the, what has gone, what has happened is that the member, the potential member jurisdictions get the model ordinance or the proposed ordinance, and it goes around, and then all of the, in this case, economic director, in some cases, county administrators, the city managers have input, and then they come up with a proposed ordinance that goes before all of the boards. And so that would be the only issue if it came before this board, just the way it is, the model or the draft, then you might be making and advertising something that another member is not. And I don't know how that ultimately impacts, but typically, it's a, the same ordinance is adopted by every member jurisdiction.
Correct.
And Mr. Granger, is that plan?
I'm amenable to participating in that. Obviously, I want everyone else to look at that. I don't want to make a decision for you guys. So if anyone looks at it and says, I got a red flag here, then you can raise it, and we obviously want to advertise at that point. But yes, I'll work with Mr. Britton. I'll work with Mr. Roberts and Mr. Minor and the city of Fredericksburg.
Very good. All right, Mr. Roberts, it sounds like a good plan, sir. Thank you for your suggestion.
Well, thank you all.
Have a good evening. Thank you, Mr. Minor.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right. Let's move on to presentation by Ms. Robyn Tenney, Library Director. Oh, sorry, that was how it was listed on the agenda.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is actually Elodie Shojinaga, and I am currently the Chair of the Smoot Board of Trustees. So I'm doing this presentation because we're the ones making this proposal to you. So, next slide. Okay, so we want to discuss the board and its makeup and the terms that we have. Fifty years ago, when we started, there were seven trustees, and you can see the terms, they were distributed over four years, three years, two years, one year, and then the plan was for everybody to have four-year terms after that, but it was distributed so that everybody wouldn't be up for renewal at the same time. Next slide. Over the years, the board has grown as we added a district to the county, and then it sounds like the at-large person only had one appointee at first, and they got given a second appointee. So now the board is 10 people. Next slide. So, like I say, over the years, we've had this problem where the dates have been moved out, and I think this is happening for a couple of reasons. The example here is that a term ends, and there was nobody to be appointed immediately. So a couple of months later, when somebody was appointed, they were appointed from that date, and then four years out from that date. So in the example here, it kind of pushed the term out about six months. They should have been, the term should have expired into 2024, and it got moved to 2025 because of the time it took to find somebody to appoint. So, next slide. And this is just another example, if somebody resigns and a position was vacated early, then again, the dates would shift, like what just happened. Next slide. So this is the current board and all the terms when they are set to expire, and this has kind of come to our attention, because as you can see, next year in 2022, five members, which is half the board, their terms are set to expire, and that's a lot of turnover or potential turnover all at once. So we wanted to make a proposal, next slide, to redistribute this back to more even, where we have three people one year, and then two, and then three, and then two. And the board, along with the library staff, sat down and looked at when people's current terms are set to expire, kind of tried to accommodate them as closely as possible, but then also to make it so that there wasn't two people in one district that were expiring the same year. So basically, we would like to propose that you accept the, everybody on this list with the one new person's name substituted for Shelley's, and make those the new expiration dates of the terms. And then also, from now on, to make all terms be the four, original four years, so that the term, basically, it's a term, it's not the person that you're going by. So if you replace somebody, they, that person would end at the original time that the other person was supposed to have ended. And we would like.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Tenney?
With Mr. Bush.
Yes.
Which he filled that vacancy. I think it, this was kind of like an idea we were floating around because we didn't know what the, we were going to do with the vacancy. So we had switched the trustees from that same district, so we would have someone there. But with the filling of it, I think it might revert back to what's in the board packet, where Dixie, Lee Washington, and Shelley Rens are flipped, since you're going to fill that vacancy with Margaret Clark.
So I'm going to respectfully defer to Mr. Bush for his preference because it is his appointment.
So, would I be able to modify the nomination? So we nominated Shelley Rens, or, sorry, we made the nomination tonight, Shelley Rens is gone, that term's going to expire in three months. Is there a way to, we did it for the remainder of this term for Ms. Rens, and can we extend it to serve another full term after that? No, we cannot. Okay. So, yeah, can we flip them?
He probably, I think we have this right.
All right, I was lost. I'm looking at this, I'm like, where did these dates?
Changed the appointments, and I kind of changed things, I wanted to have opportunity for you.
Go ahead, Mr. Britton, because I know you've taken a close look at this.
I did, and so the, the actual current iteration of the ordinance has 10 members, and that is based, it's an unusual board number, is even, but it is based on every election district, although it doesn't mention at-large, but it assumes the at-large being an election district. And so there's two of each. And what I had pointed out to Ms. Tenney was that this is a quick fuse, so you're going to need three more people in two months. Okay, so the, I think that the board action tonight would just be to reset the terms from each district as set forth above. You don't necessarily have to appoint anyone, and then the board could have the terms run through what they were supposed to. That happens as a matter of law. So if somebody is appointed to fulfill a term, they fulfill, and in fact, you can run over, that's the law, until someone is appointed in your stead. The other issue is that I'm not sure how y'all got fiscal year appointments. I think it was a confusion from your bylaw, from the bylaws, where it said that the officers of the board shall be appointed for fiscal year purposes, and then y'all started appointing the whole board for fiscal year purposes.
I think we were looking at, like, having the same date, so we would stop having the issues where.
You had a part-year officer.
All right.
Where you had a partial-year officer, right? But that's how come, if you were wondering why you have fiscal year appointments instead of calendar year appointments, that you do for other things, because the bylaws, which don't talk about board appointments, but talk about officer appointments, run with the fiscal year. So that's why you have these midterm appointments. But in any event, I don't think that tonight, or you would have to do anything with individual appointments, but you, you would need to reset the actual, and then say that each person so appointed would fulfill the term under the new appointments.
So I don't mind sharing with you all, that was my intention this evening, was to just adopt the expiration dates and give those of us who have the three closest ones time, if we needed a month, to come back in May, to come back with whether you want to reappoint or you want to make a new appointment for the June 30th, 2021 expiration dates, is what I was looking to do this evening. Because I know this is the first time we're hearing and seeing this. Mr. Bush, go ahead.
Yeah, because if I wouldn't be able to reappoint, I mean, it'd be ridiculous to appoint someone for that part of a term. I was just going to vacate the seat, let it stay vacant till the 30th, and then appoint the next, appoint her the next meeting. So, but if we can reappoint at that, at time right now, she can, as it stands, we have her fill in the remainder of Ms. Rens's term, and then I'll just reappoint whenever my colleagues do the same.
Okay, Ms. Bender, you're on the board, so I'd like to let you the opportunity to speak next.
Yeah, I wanted to say, I really appreciate Robyn and her staff for doing this. Came to, was brought to my attention a year ago, you know, maybe around the time of COVID, that this was a concern, and they've been working really hard to try to figure out, first, trying to find the original documents. And God bless Mrs. Smoot. She, she set up this library a little differently and other, and other things, and, you know, she had the fiscal year, as Mr. Britton mentioned. So it was trying to get a handle of those original documents and trying to flesh it out, and I think this is a really good compromise so that everybody doesn't leave the board at the same time. And I will say for my term, if there is a citizen who'd like to serve in Shiloh, I would give my spot up to him, because I'm on a lot of committees right now. But I love serving for the library board, but I would give it up to a citizen if they would choose to.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Stonehill?
I don't really have any questions, but just, I guess, the, you know, like we talked about, you know, the resetting of the terms, I'd be fine with that.
All right. And Mr. Granger?
No, I don't have any questions. I look, I'm looking through the minutes, it looked like the Board of Trustees were all on board with this as well. So, I mean, it doesn't seem like there's any stripe, I guess, from their perspective either. So if it helps, yeah, I'd say let's move forward with it.
Okay, so do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the new resetting of the terms of the Library Board of Trustees.
Ms. Tenney?
We are leaving, well, I'm going to say Ms. Rens for the, we're setting, we're leaving her as the, the one that you have in your board. I just want to.
Who's that?
Flipping Ms.
Student, it's 6:30, 2022.
Flipping them back.
So it'd be 6:30, 2023, then?
Yes, because Ms. Washington was set to expire first, but we are concerned about.
Yeah, it says new term expire for Rens, 6:30, 2022.
I can amend my motion. I will amend my motion to be, we will set the Smoot Library Board of Trustees as the recommended dates of ending of their terms of the fiscal year, with the caveat of switching Ms. Dixie Lee Washington with Ms. Shelley Rens, and Ms. Shelley Rens's name will be replaced with? Mr. Bush?
Margaret Clark.
Ms. Margaret Clark.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, cigarette tax committee update by Mr. Stonehill.
I think Mr. Britton did a really good job on, you know, where we are right now, but we've come up with a, I think, a very good, very strong ordinance for all of you to look at, and if you have any questions or comments, get back to that. But, you know, we, we have the, we have the ordinance, we pretty much have the stamp designed that's ready to go, that's just, needs to be approved, and we need to get all that ordered, and then advertising of the, of the public hearing. But it's, I mean, we're moving right along, and it's good that we are so far in ahead, so we're not playing catch-up. A lot of these different counties that I've talked to and towns did it, and, you know, they, they did it like weeks ahead of when they started it, so they had a lot of growing pains to work through. But we're doing, I think, so far out that we'll have a lot of, a lot of that will be taken care of. But just thank you, Matt, for all that you did for that ordinance and the rest of the folks on the CTV, but we're just, you know, we just need to move forward and advertise and go from there.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Britton, do you have anything to add, sir?
Just one other thing, the, just the general scope of what we were looking at, so the board is aware. So we originally looked at the Northern, Northern Virginia board, and then there was a proposed board in Northern Neck, and there's a lot of hurdles and pros and cons of each of those, and then made a determination through Jeff, what Jeff's work and Judy's work, reaching out to other jurisdictions, that it was very feasible to, since we would be the big fish in that pond in the Northern Neck area, and we didn't seem to be getting any traction in Northern Virginia, and that this was very doable from the other jurisdictions that we talked to. So there's a bunch of moving parts that we had looked at and reported to you, and I just, a very short summary of those things. One is passing the ordinance itself, and then you set the rate in the ordinance. The second is like getting an actual stamp, and then notifying the wholesalers. That's a little bit complicated, but basically, the wholesalers get the stamps and put them on, and they sell them stamped. Then notifying the retailers that they can't sell cigarettes that don't have a local stamp, they already have to have a state stamp, and then a local stamp. The range of that tax is up to two cents per cigarette to be set by y'all. And then as amended, there's a whole chart that we have of what all the other localities do, and Maryland just like doubled theirs or something, it's incredibly expensive, but, and how that fits in in other states and then in the country. And then you have the issue of collecting the money, that's both the commissioner revenue and then auditing those reports. And then you have the, and that will be a staff person who would be funded from the cigarette tax revenue. And then you have the issue of enforcement, which is going around, maybe spot checking or making sure that people aren't squirreling away a bunch of cigarettes in the back that they bring out, you know, or steam off the stamps and restamp them. But actually, Jeff Stonehill was sort of in charge of that for our locality with the Bureau of Alcohol, Tobacco, and Firearms, so he's very knowledgeable. I spoke with the sheriff, who's on the committee, about that. I spoke with the sheriff, who's on the committee, about that. And that's gonna just go as a catch-as-catch-can for the first year, we decided, as a recommendation to y'all. The sheriff's office will see how much time, how much of a lift it is before they reach out and say, yeah, we need a half a position, a whole position, because that comes with a whole host of support, right? And then we have storage of anything that was seized, illegal cigarettes. You have to have, for, in the ordinance, you have to be able to seize those. And then you gotta get rid of them, which is called a forfeiture. And what, what you do that, how you do that, who pays for that, and what happens to the revenue. So all of those things are covered. There are a lot of moving parts. It sounds a lot more complicated than it is. And I think we are in a good place, from having talked to everybody, to do a pretty sophisticated job. There are gonna be some holes, you know, before we do it. And there's a range. The final thing I'll say is jurisdictions that Mr. Stonehill was reporting on, where I believe it's Richmond, City Richmond, just, you know, those old newspaper boxes. You put a quarter in, you open it up, and it's sort of voluntary, that you only take one newspaper. They're sort of voluntary reporting like a newspaper box. And they figure, hey, whatever we get, we weren't getting yesterday. We're not taking that position. That's not the recommendation of the committee. But on the other hand, it's not, you know, daily inspections or, or anything like that. But people are pretty well aware, the cigarettes are still gonna be incredibly less expensive than it will be in Maryland, New York, Chicago, Illinois, you know, where they have these basically double or triple the price of the tobacco taxes. So it shouldn't have too much of an effect on retail sales. The last thing I'll say is I was in contact with Stafford until a couple of months ago. According to the information I had, they were not interested in moving forward on it. And they've jumped around on that, and they are interested in at least looking at it. And so they're way, you know, we, I agree with Mr. Stonehill that we are in a good stead in terms of timing and getting this implemented. Seems just about right, and it will begin on July the 1st of this year.
Thank you. Does anyone have questions? Any members have questions before we move on? Yes, Mr. Bush?
Thank you, Madam Chair. What is the timeline for the stamp procurement? So by the time you approve the stamp, how long is that procurement process? So that we can have them in place by the 1 July?
Four to six weeks after the P O.
Okay, so we need, that's something we can't drag our feet on. All right, thank you.
All right, then. Thank you very much, both of you, Mr. Britton and Mr. Stonehill. Let's go ahead and move on. Courthouse Planning Committee update by Ms. Bender.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I don't have any pictures this time. But I think this committee was a really good idea to make sure we do it right, building this building. Because there was an, I'm gonna bring a couple of key facts. We had a question that came up, and it was all over a bathroom. And they wanted to bring it in front of the board. And I said, nope, as long as you stay on budget, in the right amount, that you guys need to decide your own thing. And why I bring that up is, they're really working really well together to try to figure out the placement of the rooms and who gets what. And they're working together, they're bringing their staff into it. I know Mr. Mason brought his clerks up to Fredericksburg, because it kind of models after the Fredericksburg Courthouse, to make sure they need to make any adjustments. And what, from what I've been told, and we'll hear about it tomorrow, they made a lot of adjustments to the floor plan based on seeing how their needs address with that. And they'll be bringing it to us. But the whole, the whole point to that is, is they're working together so it's a building they can work in, that's good for their citizens. They're the experts, we just, you know, make the decisions. But they, they really, it's a good working group, and the building inspector was added to it. And he brought up some issues that others might not have been aware of, because these are new laws. That's what he does as his trade. So those were brought into the mix of things we had to look at. So it didn't come to change orders, it was addressed right up front. And that's the biggest thing, is that people are trying to work together so that there are no change orders, and everything is thought of ahead of time. And when they come in front of the full board with their whole plan, hopefully we won't have to do a lot of tweaking, probably have a lot of questions, but not a lot of tweaking. But do any of my colleagues have questions?
You're good, Mr. Granger, or Mr. Stonehill? Mr. Bush? All right, very good. Thank you, Ms. Bender.
Thank you.
All right, let's move on to Department of Finance. Award of a Goods and Services Contract for Dumpster and Trash Removal Services for King George County Offices. Ms. Turner?
Good evening, Madam Chair and Members of the Board. I'm Angela Turner, Procurement Specialist. Please refer to the updated copy placed in front of you that was revised with additional information. Subject Award of the Goods and Services Contract for Dumpster and Trash Removal Services for King George County Offices, which includes the Sheriff's Office, EMS, Barnesfield Park, River Cone Building, Courthouse, Parks and Recreation, Smoot Library and Wayside Park. Recommended action, authorize the county administrator to take the following actions. Issue a notice of award to Waste Management, Inc. for dumpster and trash removal service in the amount of $15,777.60. Authorize the execution of a goods and service agreement with Waste Management, Inc. in the amount of $15,777.60, subject to approval as to form, as to form by the county attorney. Summary of information, on February 24th, 2021, bids were received and publicly opened via a go-to meeting for dumpster and trash removal services. A total of four bids were received, a tab, a bid tabulation is attached. The scope of work under this project includes dumpster and trash removal, according to the current schedule, size of containers, services, locations, labor equipment, miscellaneous materials, disposal fees, and any costs exclusive to executing the required services. The low bid was submitted by Waste Management, Inc. in the amount of $15,777.60 for King George County. Staff has completed a review, review of the bid, and has determined that Waste Management is a qualified, responsible, and responsive contractor. I recommend that the Board of Supervisors authorize the county administrator to issue a notice of award to Waste Management, Inc. for dumpster and trash removal services in the amount of $15,777.60, and authorize the county administrator to execute a goods and service agreement as to form by the county attorney.
Thank you, Ms. Turner. Questions from members? All right, is there a motion?
I move to authorize the county administrator to take the following actions. Issue a notice of award to Waste Management Incorporated for dumpster and trash removal service in the amount of $15,777.60. Authorize, and authorize the execution of a goods and services agreement with Waste Management Incorporated in the amount of $15,777.60, subject to the approval as to form by the county attorney.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Turner. All right, next item, Department of Finance. Award of Contract for Financial Advisor Services.
Award of a Contract for Financial Advisor Services. Recommended action, authorize the county administrator to execute an agreement with Davenport and Company, LLC for financial advisor services, subject to approval of the agreement as to form by the county attorney. The purpose of this item is to execute a service agreement with Davenport, LLC using a cooperative procurement agreement with Dinwiddie County. The scope of service for the contract includes, but is not limited to, the following tasks. Support county in presentation and providing information to credit rating agencies, investors, and other agencies. Work with the county in developing options, plans, and strategies for financial, financing capital improvements. Advise and assist county regarding bond sales and bond underwriting firms. Assist county in the development of financial policy guidelines. Prepare debt capacity analysts, debt affordability analysts, and other deliverables relating to capital planning and financing. Assist county in long-term, multi-year financing planning and modeling. And King George County Service Authority will be invoiced separately.
Thank you, Ms. Turner. Questions from members? Mr. Granger?
Yes, ma'am, I said a quick question. So in the summary, it says using a cooperative procurement agreement with Dinwiddie County. What's?
It's a piggybacking agreement that allows you to not go through the public process because somebody else has already done it.
Second.
And that's in the R F P. We did check it out, actually. And, and Tina tracked down the current one, the other one was expired. But it's, it's a common and good way to do it, it's in the Virginia Procurement Act.
Mr. Stonehill?
No questions.
Ms. Bender?
No questions.
Mr. Bush? So, not really, well, I guess a question. Can we just make sure, I'm sure at the time of the application, their business license had not yet expired. But can we just make sure and follow up and get it? Because it's, shall be renewed by March 1, 2021. Yep, thank you.
That was on the radar screen. And I don't know if Tina mentioned it, but in the future, we're gonna go ahead and have two contracts and break this out for the Service Authority and the county. But the Service Authority is covered under this, and so there'll be invoices for the Service Authority. That money is already, the Service Authority Board of Directors has set that aside. And so they'll be paying those invoices, but it's all gonna be under Davenport, for whatever reason this was put together. But next year, it's gonna come through, I think there's an annual contract. Yeah, so next year, there'll be one before the Board of Directors and one before the county for fiscal purposes.
Thank you, Mr. Britton. Do I have a motion?
I move to authorize the county administrator to execute an agreement with Davenport and Company, LLC for financial advisor services, subject to approval of the agreement as to form by the county attorney.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Turner.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
County Attorney, advertisement request for an amendment to the King George American Tower lease.
Yes, Madam Chair. Try and make this quick. We got a request from American Tower to decrease our, their monthly rent, and for us to increase the amount of space that we were giving them. So I, I'd say, well, this doesn't make, make a lot of sense. So after a couple of back and forths and emails I got with their counsel, and, and someone from their, that knew, a business person, Neiman, me and Neiman, and we, we all had a phone call, and then I had a subsequent phone call with general counsel. And basically, what's happening is, is that they, the history of this is that in 1997 to 2002, King George entered into an agreement with AT&amp;T, then was called Washington Baltimore Cellular, and then AT&amp;T built the tower. In, on December the 14th of the year 2000, American Tower sublet from AT&amp;T that, that tower on our property. And in 2020, there was a First Amendment, which extended the lease out to 2037. And they're asking now for a Second Amendment because there's no income on the tower. They have no prospects of putting any other equipment on the tower. And the only person on the tower is us, and we don't pay. So basically, they were gonna have to terminate the lease if we didn't, if they didn't do this Second Amendment. So they reduced the lease payment a little bit, it's not much. They expanded the buffer around the tower, because they wanted to be able to put more equipment by like 50 square feet. It's not very much, it doesn't affect us. And then I was able to negotiate in a, a five-year rent guarantee on there. And so basically, those, that's, that's what's changing. But if we don't, if we're not able to extend this and reduce their rent a little bit, and extend it out to 2037, they're basically gonna have to shut down because they're not, they don't have any other rent. They believe they will be able to put a lot of equipment on there with the new broadband and everything coming in. But they, they don't have any, any, any revenue right now. So all of those were acceptable to, to Neiman, who was on the phone call at the time, on behalf of the county. It made sense to me. I made extensive revisions, most of which they accepted to their, their lease agreement. Took out all the things that was not favorable to the county, and was able to get a five-year rent guarantee, so at least we get it for five years. And at this point, I think it is in order. Because it is an amendment to a land lease, a real property lease, I believe that it has to have a, well, I mean, the law is that it has to have a public hearing in order to, to do that. So I would suggest that you consider advertisement.
All right, questions? Mr. Stonehill? Ms. Bender? Mr. Bush? All right, do I have a motion?
I move to authorize the county administrator to advertise the amendment to the American Tower lease located in Owens as presented.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Britton.
Welcome.
And County Administrators report, Mr. Cusenberry?
Thank you, Madam Chair, just a couple of items. The first item is that the Commonwealth Transportation Board will be conducting a series of public meetings to give citizens an opportunity to provide comments on the FY '22 through '27 Six-Year Improvement Program. I provided you a copy of that and when the meetings are scheduled. The next item, at the next Service Authority meeting, Mr. Raul Gonzalez with the Hampton Road Sanitation District will be providing a presentation associated with, I think it's the private sewer system at Fairview Beach. And he wanted to make the same presentation to the Board of Supervisors. But I'm suggesting that if any board members, or the supervisor members not on the Board of Directors would come to the Service Authority meeting, they could hear his presentation then. The next item is that the Merlin Transportation Authority is requesting approval for temporary occupancy to pave some parking areas at the, let's see, it's a gravel access road at Wayside Park and the parking lot at Dogon Heritage Museum. I requested some additional information regarding what they were gonna be, how they were gonna be paving the areas, and also a certificate of insurance. They've provided that. So just letting the board know that I will be signing that temporary occupancy for that work to be done. And the final thing is that we will have a groundbreaking ceremony for the Fairview Beach Riverbank Stabilization Project on Friday, April the 16th, at 1:00 P M.
Thank you, sir. Questions from members? Mr. Stonehill, you good?
Travis, I was just trying to, I'm looking at this map, and I was a little confused on. So they're actually gonna be up inside of Barnesfield, doing some of the paving of the existing gravel parking that's there? I was trying to follow along with this, and I.
It's actually the.
Too sketchy for me.
The parking at, and Wayside Park.
Oh, so it's all down at Wayside?
It's all, well, the.
Or what was Wayside?
It was Wayside, it's the access road in Wayside, but it's the parking lot at the, at the museum. The county owns that parking lot.
Correct, right. Okay, I was looking at this, well, I didn't figure out where it was.
They are paving the entrance to the road, all that paving is being done too. But this is, this is, they're requesting permission to be on county property to pave these two areas.
Okay, thanks.
The remainder of it's in the right of way.
Okay, I don't have any other.
Ms. Bender?
For a little help on clarification off that, it's the parking lot that's next to the museum, right?
Correct.
And would that interfere with that museum at all?
They have to coordinate with the museum operations. So yes, temporarily, it will be some interference, but they'll be able to do that in one day.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Bush? All right, I don't have any questions. Thank you, sir, for your report. And with that, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that the King George County Board of Supervisors convene in closed meeting pursuant to State Code Section 2.23711A3 for discussions, considerations, consultation with legal counsel concerning the potential acquisition of real property for public purposes and disposition of publicly held real property, where discussions in an open meeting would adversely affect bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the board in Section 2.23711A5, 6, and 8 for discussions concerning prospective business or industry or expansion of existing buildings or industry, where no previous announcement has been made of the public, of the business, where industry's interest in locating or expanding its facilities in the community. or industry's interest in locating or expanding its facilities in the community. Discussions or considerations of the investment of public funds where competition or bargaining is involved, where if publicly made initially financial interest of the governmental unit would be adversely affected in consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by public body regarding a specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel. I invite the county administrator, the county attorney, because they are deemed necessary and/or their presence will reasonably aid the board in its consideration of the topics to be discussed pursuant to VA Section 2.23712F. Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. We are in closed session.
All right then, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that the King George County Board of Supervisors return to public meeting and certify by vote that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening that closed meetings were heard, discussed, or considered during the closed meeting.
All right, shall we so certify then?
So certify.
So certify.
So certify.
So certify.
So certify. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
We're back in open session.
Sorry, we are back in open session. I will entertain a motion.
I move to adjourn to April 7th at 6:00 p.m. here in the boardroom.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Your vote's aye. Motion carries. We are adjourned.